Welcome, everyone. To the DeKalb Planning and Zoning Commission this Tuesday, September 6th. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Becker, O'Flaherty?
Here.
Penya Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
Chair Maxwell?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Move to the approval of the agenda, if there are any additions or deletions. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wright.
I second it.
Seconded by my man, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes from the meeting from August 15th. If anybody has any additions or deletions, please speak now. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
A move to approve is written.
Moved by O'Flaherty.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. If you have anything that you would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward at this time. I do believe we have one speaker request form. Is that in, and I'm sorry, is that in relation to one of the hearings? Okay, all right, then, yeah, we'll call you up at that point then. New business, we have a public hearing, a petition filed by Fullerton Engineering Consultants LLC for Dish Wireless LLC for approval of special use permit for antennas and associated communication equipment on top of the building at 507 East Taylor Street. I believe we have someone to make a presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Goldschlag, I work for Fullerton Engineering. We are one of Dish Wireless's contractors. So, we prepared the construction drawings and do the site acquisition and hearings like this. Won't take up too much time, it's really, I think it's undeniable nowadays that we use our cell phones and data for not just, you know, social media and personal things, but for, God forbid, if you have to call 911, or, you know, if you're driving from out of town trying to get to the public library, you need a map, look at Google Maps. The reason all of that is possible is because of wireless infrastructure, such as antenna facilities and cell towers. And the project that I am here for today is, Dish Wireless is proposing the installation of an antenna facility on the rooftop of 507 East Taylor Street, which is a 16-story building in an RC1 district. The purpose of this is to, you know, the radio frequency engineers over at Dish determined that there is insufficient coverage for their network in this area. One option would be to build a new cell tower, but of course, nobody wants to look at that. So, the best alternative is to install it on an existing rooftop to reach the height that's required. And that is pretty much what this proposes to do. It'll be just about unnoticedable, as opposed to a new cell tower, which is very noticeable. And there are already antenna facilities up there from other carriers. So, it's really not going to change much of the landscape at all. And even in addition to that, they are proposing to conceal the antennas with reflective tape, which is a relatively new, new method of concealment. So, yes, as you can see on the photo, it's not completely hidden, but just about as close as you can get. So, I mean, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it's, it's pretty much an antenna facility going on the rooftop of a building.
Sure.
And if you're not looking for it, you probably won't even see it.
Very well camouflaged. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, or we go to staff?
Yeah, I'll just run through the staff report, and then we'll get public input. Yeah, as the applicant mentioned, Dish Wireless is looking to put in antennas and associated equipment. Or, there's three other carriers up there, Taylor Street Plaza. Many recall some of those going through, either coming back for special use, since I didn't get one at the beginning. But this is a new carrier, Dish Wireless, wanna, they're implementing or deploying new 5G broadband network and wanna serve the area. So, our UDO requires antennas like this on, either on a tower, a building, where they're co-locating, that's, requires a special use permit. So, they've applied to that, and they have to meet certain requirements in the UDO regarding impact on the neighborhood. And I've listed all those, and the applicant filled out the application in a good summary in backup material indicating that they're meeting all the requirements for the special use and the associated equipment. So, I want to run through those. I would note, as the others have done up there, and most of the others, I put the concealment tape on there, so that's kind of a reflective material that helps hide these. So, I think in the past, the city with these facilities wanted to either surround them, screen all the equipment, or what came last year, one of the carriers was this reflective film that's put on that helps reflect the sky. So, they're not 100% invisible, but they do kinda cut down on the impact visually to the area and the surrounding neighborhoods. So, I've listed in the staff report all the standards for special use, specifically for antenna facilities that's in the UDO, and they're meeting all those. And then also the special use permit standards, which they're meeting. So, they're not exceeding the height of the, they're not increasing the height of the towers out there that already exist out there. They're meeting all the other requirements. So, we'd recommend approval. There's a sample motion, this proves the antennas and equipment in the drawings that were provided, that's Exhibit A. And also the antennas, the requirement that they be wrapped with concealment tape. Shows in red here where the new antennas and equipment will go, ones that are highlighted in red there. And then they have to meet all the building code requirements per the UDO. That's one of the other conditions. That's standard conditions we've approved on the other special use permits out there.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for any questions from the commission.
What is the unit like that weigh?
No, they're, usually, I believe around, the antennas, I think, are about 20, 30 pounds. And with all the additional equipment, it's, I think it comes around like 70 pounds or so. But we've done our due diligence and run structural analysis reports, made sure that everything's structurally sound, there's not gonna be any issues with that. That'll come to play during the building permit portion, but...
Yeah, they'll submit that information when they apply for the permit.
Looking at the readings here, is this gonna replace, are there some abandoned antennas up there? Are these are gonna replace? Are these new?
These will be new antennas.
Yeah, these will be new antennas.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I know, I'm not 100% clear. I believe there are three abandoned antennas up there.
Okay.
That would be removed. At least, that's what the drawings say. I wasn't involved in that part of the process, but, you know, it's, it's not adding anything that's not already up there.
So, I guess that would take the weight issue off the table, then? Right, if we're gonna take out, are three antennas being removed and three more is put in?
Yeah.
Does Dish have any other antennas in DeKalb?
I believe they do have another facility on one of the towers nearby. I don't have that information offhand, though.
I think if it was anywhere, it would be, Lincoln Center? Yeah, Lincoln Tower.
Yeah, Lincoln Tower has quite a few. I don't know if Dish is there, then, University Plaza, and Crane has quite a few facilities. But I, there's been no special use permits for Dish anywhere else.
Any other questions? I do say I wanna find that tape for Halloween, though, 'cause I think that would be alter cool. Get that for the record. Okay, if there's no other questions from the commission, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of a special use permit for antenna and associated equipment on top of a 16-story building at 507 East Taylor Street to allow for the installation and communication equipment associated with Dish Wireless subject to the following. Number one, the antennas and the equipment shall comply with the drawings dated on 7/19/22, indicated in Exhibit A. Number two, antennas and associated visible equipment shall be wrapped with concealment tape. And number three, the applicant is required to submit the necessary application and plans to the city in compliance with the applicable building codes and the regulations of Article 7.08 of the UDO, Wireless Communications Ordinance.
So motion by McMahon. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stoker, could I have a roll call, please?
Becker, O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penya Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Second amendment of new business today, a public hearing, a petition by Martin Garcia Miranda and Paulina Chavez Martinez for approval of the rezoning of the site at 304 North Sixth Street and associated parking lot from the LI Light Industrial to the LC Light Commercial District in order to accommodate a grocery store and a small restaurant. And we have a presentation?
More of it, and answering any questions that...
I'm sorry, your name is?
I was about to get to that.
Oh, okay.
I'm Mike Gork, I am the attorney for Martin and Paulina, who are also present.
Okay.
I think we need to go ahead and have them talk what they wanna do, and...
Yeah, if you could walk through what is in the packet?
Basically, what...
Hello, everybody. My name is Martin Garcia. Probably, some of you guys are familiar with me, some of not. Yeah. We have a small grocery store on 10th Street. And we are trying to open a bigger location for the community to be more convenient for everyone in by the area. We had a place before in the area, but it's not anymore. So, we're trying to get some place back to the downtown.
Sure.
We're trying to buy the property. We are just waiting for the rezoning and follow all the requirements from the city to try to go ahead and do it in the business in downtown.
Okay.
Probably is gonna be one of the first Hispanic business in the area in the last 20 years that you have seen for a while. Yeah, I'm trying to help the city working hard like every one of us, yeah. Any question about what we're gonna do in it?
Yeah, can we go through the staff report first?
Yeah, then there might be questions after that.
Yeah, thanks, we'll get back to the questions section in one second. He's just gonna run through his review.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, as Martin mentioned, he has a current grocery store, once opened a grocery store at 304 North Sixth Street. You see the location there, it's a building. And then that also includes associated parking lot across to the south, across Oak Street, about a 48, 50 space parking area, that's part of the project. So, the zoning currently is light industrial. Grocery stores and restaurants are currently not permitted in that district, so there was a need to rezone it. And we thought the light commercial district was the best, that accommodates those two uses. And there is some light commercial zoning in that area. So, the, the building is about 9,900 square feet. The grocery store and restaurant will occupy about 6,800. There's the building there. And the remaining 3,100 square feet, there's a current tenant in there, AID, Association of Individual Development, that's a counseling service. They're at 3,100 square feet, they're gonna remain in the building. There was a floor plan that was provided. It's kinda hard to see, but they're, that's the current one. It's in your packets, but they're taking up, the grocery store and restaurant will be the, I guess, two-thirds of the east part of the building, so to speak. AID is up front next to North Sixth Street. There's some pictures of the building. So, this is a rezoning, we're not approving a specific site plan or any conditions. A rezoning is, recommend approval or recommend denial of it. But we did wanna look at a few things, onsite off-street parking is required for this use. So, doing rough calculations for the restaurant, small restaurant and the grocery, based on number of seats and the square footage. There was about approximately 46 spaces required in that parking lot to the south of Oak has about 48 to 50 spaces. It's hard to determine that it's striped, the owner's gonna restripe that, it's very faded, so it's hard to tell how many they have. But based on aerial photos and a check by the applicant, that's about 48 to 50, and according to the marketing brochure, too. So, there is adequate off-street parking, so they meet that requirement. We've been in discussions, too, and looked at the parking in the public way in front of the building. This is along Oak Street, you can see the, it's paved up to the sidewalk, but this is city right-of-way, it's not striped currently. And there's an area along Sixth Street that's not striped either. So, we don't want cars just pulling up. His two doors will be on Oak Street to the grocery store, that's how you'll access it. So, what's being proposed is some parallel spaces. We've talked to the applicant, and we have an engineer involved and working with their architect to make sure those spaces, and they'll be put in by the applicant per the city's direction, where to put them, and they gotta meet all the dimensional requirements. There'll probably be a couple handicap spaces, too, on Oak Street and the parallel spaces. There's not enough depth to put 90-degree or angle parking that would stick out in the street and make a hazardous situation. So, we're gonna make sure people that park there are in a designated spot that meets the design requirements per the UDO. So, they'll be doing that. And there's also some, that's the back of the building. There's some paved area in front of the building on Sixth Street. They won't have a door access there, but AID does. So, that will be striped, too. The west side is striped. Door Sixth Street in that section was turned into one-way in summer of 2021. Some of you may recall this rezoning of a daycare center recently along there, which did not go forward. But there's adequate parking along North Sixth Street. There's usually between 7 to 11 parking spaces, either on the west or east side, that are open during different times of the day. So, there's adequate parking, there's no restrictions on hours at this time, or time. That could change with the grocery store, but that will be determined by the city. It's not something the commission is being asked to determine if it should be done or not. But, so we've looked at the parking, he has adequate off-street parking. We're looking at the paved area in front of the store to make sure those are striped and meet the requirements and are safe, you know, and accommodating. So, so that would be done, you know, in conjunction or shortly thereafter them occupying the space, particularly the ones by the building probably need to be striped before they certainly open. So, we did take a look at that. We did the findings of fact for any rezoning. Our comp plan, new comp plan calls for a commercial there, of course. So, they'll see zoning, I did provide a zoning map. That's the site in yellow here, this is light commercial zoning in the reddish pink here, light industrial here, so there's light commercial to the north. This area is not, you know, is, the trend of development is more office, commercial use is not industrial or heavy industrial uses. I thought the zoning was appropriate and it's consistent with some zoning in the area. All the requirements are being conformed with per the UDO. It won't have any detrimental effect on the surrounding area, should be, will occupy some empty office space, or space now, commercial space with the good use that will serve the neighborhood and community. There's adequate utilities to the site, adequate off-street parking's provided. There'll be some modifications to the parking in front of the building to make it safe and accessible for everybody. And we didn't receive any public, written public input as of the posting of the agenda on Thursday. So, we're recommending approval, there's a sample motion. Once the approval of the rezoning is accomplished, then they'll apply for building permits and parking permits, and things will be looked at again. They did submit a revised floor plan, some modifications were made with that, and we'll take a further look at that regarding the inside. But we think it's a good reuse of the building, and there'll be no impact, negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? This petition, I should say. If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commission if we have any questions. Anyone?
I have a question about the parking on the street, Dan. When you say they're gonna, or there's parallel parking, who will take care of that? Will the city take care of that, or will the building owner take care of that?
Well, they'll stripe it, and then, it's a city right-of-way, so we'll have future maintenance and snow plowing, snow clearing. But it'll be striped, paid for by the applicant for our direction.
So, just visualizing, this is gonna be a grocery store here? Am I gonna, I mean, cars will be parked up, right up on that, parallel parked, on that lighter part, right up there?
Yeah, they'll park in parallel, meaning, parallel with the building along here. They will not pull in diagonally. The spaces will be 22 feet long, nine feet wide, that's a parallel parking space depth. So, probably get, with a couple handicap, only maybe three parallel spaces, but they'll pull in that way. And they're long enough to accommodate parallel parking. So, they will not be up on the sidewalk, they'll have to stay away from that.
Is there enough space there with that sidewalk?
There's enough width there to go parallel spaces, so some of the sidewalk will, they'll have to put them where they're not in front of the door. So, we've taken a preliminary look at this, and it's being further developed by the architect for the applicant and our city engineer to make sure the spaces work and don't conflict with their entrance and exit doors on the property, so...
Will there be another door?
Yeah, there's a... Two doors on... Yeah, there's one. There's one here.
One here, okay.
And one there. So, there, you can see a couple cars in the past that parked parallel without any striping. So, there appears to be enough room between the building and the actual, I guess, edge of the street to get parallel spaces. So, there won't be a ton of them, but we wanna make sure they're not conflicting with doorways of people getting out and meeting the ADA requirements, wanna make sure they're doing that, so...
I have a question. Is there any plans to have like a cart corral? Okay, would that just be in the other parking lot, and then?
On the private parking.
Okay. So, there'll be people pushing their carts across the street into the other parking lot, and then leaving them there?
We have done to get some person to take out a pass and let them come out and shop the carts.
Yeah, I'd love to show that in the parking plan, a cart corral, we've asked him about that. So, I'd love to show that somewhere in the parking lot. So, I don't imagine on the whole lot, nothing like Chinooks or Jewel, but there'd be, he plans to have that, so have that service available to using carts, and then a place to store them till they can get them back across the street, so...
Back to the parking, just for a moment, are there any, when, when it's kind of a grade like that, when there's no physical curb, are there any requirements to have, you know, like the concrete pillars, so people don't accidentally pull into the building or anything like that?
You mean some barrier between that and the building?
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to, I mean, I guess if it's striped, the only thing I'm thinking about is like normally when you go to parallel park, you're parking against a curb.
Yeah.
And if you're not parking against a curb, I mean, that's kind of your feeler distance from wherever the sidewalk is, and if somebody's trying to parallel park, it can be kind of a challenge.
Yeah. That'll be looked at when we're designing those, make sure that's either designated, so they're not too close to the building.
Yeah.
Some barrier, the striping on the parking.
I know how horrible I am, and if I'm working for a backup camera, you'd probably find inside the door.
Yeah. We wanna do something, not just leave it blank curb, 'cause then people will just pull up diagonally, and there's not 90-degree, and they're back into the big trucks sticking out in the road, and...
True.
So, it's kind of a unique situation where we have parking like that.
It's probably a good idea.
Usually have a parkway, you know, grass, and no parking on the, yeah. But it's there, so we wanna make sure it's safe if people are pulling in there, yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Comments? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motioned by Stoker.
Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the rezoning of subject site at 304 North Sixth Street and associated parking lot from the LI Light Industrial District to the LC Light Commercial District.
So, motion by Stoker, may I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty, may I have a roll call, please?
Becker, O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penya Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. First steps. Okay, last item on the agenda for this evening, we have a public hearing, a petition by Jacob Tennant, Egg Toy Studios Design, Inc. for approval of the rezoning of the site at 311 to 317 North Fourth Street and 321 Oak Street, First United Methodist Church, and associated parking lot from the RC1 Residential Conservation District to the public PD-C-Plan Development Commercial District in order to accommodate the future development of an art studio and exhibit space.
Hello, thank you, everybody, for being here. My name is Jacob, I am the owner and founder of Egg Toy Studios, along with my wife, Bree. We've been in the Sycamore area for 15 years now, operating in a number of different areas, and have never had any noise complaints, bad neighbor type of complaints. So, the idea of looking at moving into an area that the church is currently setting in is definitely something that I feel is a doable situation as far as our impact on the community. If you don't mind, I would like to take a few minutes just to read through part of our petition letter to let you, everybody here, know a little bit more about our company and what we do.
Please, Jim.
Egg Toy Studios has been a force in public space and hospitality's industry for over 20 years, specifically for our reputation for integrity and attention to detail, both as creative collaborations with clients, as well as our dedication to quality crafted work. The proposed rezoning, I feel, I feel our vision for the development is in line with DeKalb's vision for the future of the city and its residents. Our influence extends to a client base that travel from all over the country to visit our facility, pulling in high-end design firms and nationally awarded developers, including Graduate Hotels, Four Seasons Resort, Core Spaces. From international brand giants like Amazon, Gibson Guitars, to local icons like Upstaging, Chicago Fire Soccer Club, Chicago Cubs, and Chicago Blackhawks. Egg Toy Studios Design prides itself on being a net positive in any community, seeking creativity and innovation while valuing integrity and investment. We believe strongly in the investment of our facility and capability, but feel stronger in the investment in our community and those looking to make, on which we make an impact. We currently employ two accomplished artists from the DeKalb area. Egg Toy Studios has also maintained a relationship with Kishawaki College for over eight years, in which we've interned many students coming out of their automotive, fabrication programs, as well as some of their CAD programs. as well as some of their CAD programs. One of our former students is still currently employed with Egg Toy Studios and is now going on their third year of employment with us. Our staff is maintained right around seven people, including my wife and myself. Occasionally times a year, we get one or two additional people, bringing our total number to about nine. We do have attached some floor plans to show a little bit of how we think we can make good use of the space. As it's such a unique space, it has such a unique set of buildings and layout, we have a few areas that we think are best suited to keep most of our fabrication work in. The sanctuary area, we would love to have as an exhibit space, be it for showing our final pieces as they come together. We have a lot of large pieces that'll exceed twenty foot, so as they get built in small parts, they usually are then assembled as a larger show, and it's a great time to, at that point, have clients come out and be able to see what their pieces look like in the progress, what their piece looks like as it's coming together. Our current space in the Anaconda Building in Sycamore, we moved into, we started moving there about nine, ten months ago, and over the past year have rehabbed all these offices that were thirty-plus years old, unoccupied and just nicotine-covered and falling apart. And what we've been able to do, just with what we had on hand and were able to show, was a really impressive feat in the area. As we've had clients out seeing the area, the immediate impression has been, we need to have parties out here, we need to get people out here. It's, it creates such a fun environment for people to come see creative projects that they're getting involved with and to come, kinda let loose and have some examples of pieces that sometimes is hard to sell to a client, especially when it's somebody who may not be on the creative scale of it. So we like having the idea of the sanctuary, some of the design office spaces, to where we can set up some of these vignettes, to where they can change out as different clients come in and say, oh, I, I like this feel, how can you do this for our area? Or I'll take this whole wall over here in these, cause you've already done a great job of curating a collection. I know one of the big concerns becomes with noise and some of the things that the art studio involves as far as welding, woodwork, painting. I don't think that any of those are outside of the realm of our potential ability to mitigate any sort of, mitigate any impact on the community. We've had both Bill Nichols as well as Don Harper out from the city to meet at our location and see what an average day of noise really means. As you approach the facility, how much noise do you hear, what do you see traffic-wise happening outside? We sat in a conference room, probably the length of this room away from our main fabrication area, without any general disruption the entire time. So though some of these things happen, it's not a twenty-four-seven or just always grinding, always pounding. Sometimes people think as soon as they start thinking industrial applications like woodwork and welding, the amount of time that actually goes into the design aspects, the cultivating of ideas and the refining of some of these things is, is a major part of this process. So even though we have some items that generally tend to bristle people a little bit or get them concerned, I don't think that they're, I don't think that it should be an overwhelming factor for the area.
Kim?
Thank you, Jacob.
Steph report?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, the applicant went over very well what they're doing, so we have, so of course, First United Methodist Church is building a new facility on North Annie Glen Road, so this has been up for sale for some time, so city was always interested in having something go there that would, first of all, keep the historic building. There's a lot of interest in it, and Jacob Tennant came forward with this proposed use, art gallery, and he described the work he's doing, and we did have a couple of staff members up at the facility in Sycamore, pretty impressed and thought it'd be a good fit at this location. So the rezoning request, it's currently his own residential conservation district, also includes the, here's a church site here, includes the church building, the parsonage and the two-story classroom area, and also they have a parking lot across North Fourth Street that is owned by the church, it's part of this request. So it's residential conservation district now, public land use designation, they're requesting P D C Plan Development Commercial. We thought that was the best use that would accommodate all the different uses, the art gallery, the small retail area they might have, the church, of course, so they're gonna be, when they close on their property, the lease to the church back the property until that facility's done next summer. So the church will be in there, they're not moving in till the church is out next summer. They may move some, talk to the applicant, some storage of some equipment or something and total cooperation with the church before that, but, so the church will be there till their facility's open and then, if approved, the applicant will move in based off the floor plan shown. So the P D C will accommodate all those uses. We also had a couple of development standards, a max on the retail space of a thousand square feet, which will accommodate what they're doing, wanna do, and also timeframe on the church to be there until the end of August thirty-one, end of August twenty-twenty-three. And if that, some delay in the construction, they can come in and amend that date, but, so that's the only standards we have. The parking lot, as the applicant noted, there's only seven to nine staff and he indicated roughly twelve parking spaces are occupied routinely during the day based on their facility in Sycamore. So the parking lot across North Fourth is thirty-six stalls, so that should be adequate for obviously any daily traffic and any events they may have on the, in the facility. So we feel that's an adequate number of parking, plus there's public parking spaces to the south, southwest of the site owned by the city that could accommodate any additional parking if needed. So with the rezoning, they meet all the requirements, we run through the findings there, they meet the comp plan regarding downtown enhancement, we had comments in there about historic preservation, they're meeting those, of course. We think the P D C is appropriate for the site. The library, where we're at now, is P D C zoning, and also Gore Tower to the southeast is P D C zoning, so it fits in with the area, maintains the church building, we think it's adaptive reuse of the building and a good idea, so meets all the rezoning requirements. We did see, receive one public response form from Delano's, John Delano, Home Decorating across the street, indicating their support for the rezoning. And a sample motion's prepared, per the development standards on Exhibit A, again, very short, is accommodating the art studio, exhibit space, associated uses, the retail space not exceeding a thousand square feet, and then the church and their associated uses can stay until August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Kim, thank you, Dan. We do have one speaker request form, Trent Lang, if you'd like to step forward, please state your name and address.
My name's Trent Lang, I live at three zero one Miller Avenue in DeKalb, currently treasurer of First Lutheran Church. Just had a general question about the alley that First Lutheran shares with this building, if this would change the traffic or there'd be blockage with the garage door. And then just a question with the city, the alley currently isn't in very good condition, if there was some commitment from the city of repaving or improving that? Any questions?
The alley?
Yes.
Okay.
That shares.
Okay.
Well, I can pass on the comment about the alley to Public Works City Manager regarding that. I know they're looking at different alleys in the area, but I can pass that on. But there'll be no disruption to the alley, it's public right away, so they're not proposing anything that would conflict with that. They, I think, showed on plans a possible overhead door on that side in the future, but that won't be, you know, in the right way of the alley, so.
The, I'd say the only sort of blockages or areas in the alley would be specific kinds of loading, unloading. We maybe get weekly an order of steel that might come in, that takes us thirty minutes to move in and move out. The bulk of our year is spent building for a lot of our projects that are then installed over a two, three-month period over the summertime, with a couple of random projects throughout the year. Most of that planning and packing is done within one day per project, and not in a manner that would leave the alleyway impassable through, for other traffic.
Kim, thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else like to speak to the petition? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to questions from the commission.
I don't really have a question, but I really like the idea of this kind of reuse on a, on this building. I think it could be a really excellent way for us to keep that neat old building, it to live another life, a, probably a good setup for, for you guys too, having everything kind of all together and, and meta-use.
It accommodates well, the, the different buildings allow us the ability to have these areas and have them distinct from each other. Before we made our move in the Anaconda Building, we were in the front side of it facing Sycamore, so we did have residential exposure all along our east side as well of our, as well as our north side, with no issue there. The building itself, the way it was structured, however, was very open, and as you walked in, you kinda had all your office area, all your everything, just sort of out in the open. So this building does allow a nice setup, those are some of our before and afters as we moved into the room in the, the other side of the Anaconda Building. One of the other things that we like too is Northern Illinois has its grad student, stu-, art studios right across the street from there as well. So, you know, we would love to be able to be in a situation where our...
Well, they just moved us.
They moved, yeah.
Oh, did they? No, they're not there anymore. Still include, still being able to include aspects of the university or the community, if there were a push to have an exhibit space to be able to show graduating seniors or a graduate class, you know, two or three grad students that wanted to exhibit, it'd be nice to have an area like that. One of our, a friend of mine and somebody who's kind of been a mentor in this project is the owner of Architectural Artifacts down in Chicago, and it's, it's a wonderful facility, the way that they're able to have sort of exhibit space, event-type space, that is just filled with neat, interesting things. It's one of those things, when you do have an event, it adds to people talking and, you know, conversation, and it's not just a big open hall where you're left sitting looking at each other. It's, it's a neat, it's a neat way to bring people in and to be able to show some of our work at the same time.
Yeah, I agree with Trixie, I, I mean, I think it's a phenomenal use of the space and having somebody that spent practically nine years of their life there with scouts in the, in the latter part of the, the day, I, I'm really happy that, you know, it's gonna be used for, you know, the production of our work of any kind. I'm not, and I apologize, I'm not familiar, but do you guys do largely commission work or is it?
It's, for the most part, it becomes large contract commission. Most of our projects are, we'll say, we'll have a property that is being developed and they'll call us in to do like a lobby area, like maybe some of their clubroom areas or rooftop amenities areas. So a lot of times it may be one project or one market that we're working in, but that project has thirteen different items that we're doing for it.
Gotcha.
And the, the, a lot of the times we do get ran, people will, Upstaging is a good one, is they're doing their stage events and their tour things, they have their game down very tight, they know what they're doing, they know what they produce well. Every now and then when it's a piece that is more along that sculpture art side as opposed to their normal show presentation, their lighting stuff, they've reached out to us to look to do stuff, and it's been, it's been a good relationship seeing that. So we, we've had people seek us out for individual items, for the most part, it is coming in to do treatments for a whole area, though.
Yeah, well, and then you have a gift portion, you said you were gonna try to dedicate to retail and gallery or two, right?
So, right, so a lot of the sort of exhibit-type gallery area would be some of the design rooms, design offices in the exhibit space in the original sanctuary. Eventually, what we would like to look at is where the house currently sits, using that lower floor, just sort of as a smaller items, different things, some of our, some of our, some of our pieces that we go out and purchase will be vintage items that are just sold as is vintage, we'll have designers come in that we're doing bar backs or areas for, and they'll accessorize and pick pieces from that. A lot of times they have vintage pieces that then have been modified and turned into lighting or turned into table fixturing, and so you get sort of a range of just straight-off-the-shelf stuff and then things that have a little bit more of a custom feel to it, so.
True.
It'd be nice to have a little showroom area that we could have a little bit of a retail presence for.
I'm really excited.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm excited as well, but I still have a question. So, do you, are you a seven-day-a-week operation or do you, particularly on Sundays, I mean, there's a lot of churches around? And then it also kinda ties into that, if you say, I know that it comes with a, a parking lot, are you planning on having like a tow sign only or would you be willing to work with businesses in the area on Sundays to maybe you let overflow parking happen?
So, if, depending, I saw, is if it were a one-day-a-week overflow parking, especially for the churches on Sunday, that would be an easier thing. One of my concerns with that associated parking across the street is we do have some company, like trailers and vehicles, sometimes we get vehicles that come in for projects that we have set aside. At one point, good example point is at one point on our other property, we had an old airstream that we were turning into a rooftop bar. There were a number of times, even though the property had fencing around it, we came out there and found people inside the airstream or doing, so I would kind of like to keep it as private as possible. If the situation were to require it, if we had to build some sort of enclosure for some of those longer-stay pieces, especially with the student housing right across the street and some of the other, some of the other bigger properties like that, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but then being able to use that front part as overflow traffic for the churches, wouldn't be opposed to that. It's not something that would, that would affect our ability to work. So I, like I said, I, I would hesitate to, just for insurance reasons and stuff, to open it up to just general public parking at any time. I have no problems in trying to accommodate a situation, though.
I have another question. You talked about noise, and on her question, are you open Monday through Friday, like hours or years? I know art can, artists can come in anytime.
Our, our regular shop hours, we run our Monday through Friday, for the most part, it's eight o'clock till five o'clock. From probably April first to early August, sometimes we have people that come in more around seven o'clock. As far as weekends go, there's usually somebody around doing something, and if there are specific noise request or non-noise request type of hours that somebody wanted to set as sort of a standard during particular mass times, or if there were, you know, if they, if there's a regular set day where there's other services that typically happen outside of the Sunday thing, I'd be happy to try to work around a lot of that. I feel fairly confident, though, that the bulk of our work and our noise really wouldn't penetrate that building too much. By the time you have the air conditioner, the vent going or whatever it is in there, you know, like I said, I would be, I'd be happy to be considerate of the people around me. I don't think it'll be as ness, I, I don't think it'll be as much of a, as a nuisance as you may think. Standing right next to it and hearing it like that, like I said, we, we were able to hold meetings just down the hallway from it, and with the people that we have there, it's not, it's not like one of those things where it's just a constant droning noise. You know, as you drive by like the forge and some of the other areas and it's just heavy, pounding equipment, and just, just the equipment itself operating is loud and is obtrusive to the public space. We don't have anything like that that is constantly running and going.
Well, the traffic there's a good buffer, too, it's quite busy right there.
That helps.
How does the, the space compare? This is, this is about maybe total forty thousand square feet?
So our current space that we're in right now is thirty-five thousand square foot. The current space that we have does offer a larger floor plan in the fabrication area. We're currently on a three-year, we're one year into a three-year contract on that place with two additional three-year renewals at our discretion. Currently, at least for the next three years, for the next year until they're able to occupy their new property, and then probably those continuing two years as a move-in process, we plan to keep our facility in Sycamore as well. At the end of those three years, if business is still moving as it is, we're likely gonna keep both facilities operating. At this point right now, we have contracts, we have contracts in the work out through twenty-twenty-five.
That's great.
Anyone else? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the rezoning of subject site at 311 through 317 North Fourth Street and 321 Oak Street and the associated parking lot from the RC1 Residential Conservation District, public to the PDC- C Plan Development Commercial District per the standards in Exhibit A.
So moved by Flaherty may have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Wright. May have a roll call?
Becker? Well, Flaherty?
Yes.
Penya Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. If anybody has any additional questions or interest as well, I recommend our Instagram site is probably the most updated, as well as any emails or further things that come up, I'd be happy to answer or entertain, you know, any, any further concerns you might have about the, about the area and our operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Steph reports on anything that's coming up?
Yeah, just briefly, the comp plan was approved by the City Council on August 22nd, so thanks for all your hard work on that. They also approved that night Sunvest Solar Farm on Pleasant Street and the tax amendments that were associated with that. Next meeting, September 19th. We'll have one hearing on the annexation rezoning of Afton Road, that's the road the city put into East Meta from Gerler to Kessinger, and then we'll begin to have a discussion on the comp plan as a kind of follow-up, or we had a lot of directions and things to do from the comp plan, so we'll begin talking about those priorities, scheduling, different things that the comp plan called for, for us to do next, so we'll begin discussions on that.
Sounds great.
And you have the hard copies of the plan, of course, and the maps are in the inside cover for you, so.
And again, thank you to you and Bill for all the hard work on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If that is all, I will ask for a motion to So moved by Mr. Wright. Seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded by McMahon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you and have a great night.